If y'all would be so inclined, it is nine o'clock. We're making up for all those first two meetings of the year that we got out so early. I don't think there's any way we're gonna make it through all of these items. And I want to make sure we get through those that are noticed, so we don't have to renotice those. So would anyone be opposed to postponing item 7A, the Formula Business Discussion? I think that's one that merits enough time to talk about, so I propose we postpone that. I think in scanning this, we can get through the rest of them if we postpone that item, but I don't know if we can get through them all. Any objections postponing 7A to a future meeting?
Do you need a motion, or just?
Just if there's nobody opposed, I think we're good. All right. Item 7A, if you were sticking around for 7A, we will hear at some future date. And with that, we have announcements and recognitions. It feels weird to do this at this time of night. Is he still here? All right, we have a proclamation of, Jake, if you would join me, join me down here, please. This was, this is a recognizing New, I can't say this because I'm not Greek, but New Smyrna and New Smyrna Beach as sister cities. And I asked Jake to join me, this was, he brought this to the commission, I think, first. This was one of his initiatives. And so I'll read this, I think he had a few comments. And then there was someone in the audience, I'm sorry, did they stick around, or they? Yes, come on ahead, yes.
We have several.
I'm so sorry, yeah, that's right. Thank you all for your endurance. Yeah, yeah, right, we're testing the family ties here already. How much you are gonna be sisters?
So if I, Mr. Mayor, can you quickly introduce a little short, please?
We have Athas Komitis. Athas Komitis is a local wonderful person who is a member of AHEPA. AHEPA is the American Hellenic Education Progressive Association. That beautiful monument we have in the park is for AHEPA and is a commemoration of the almost ancient Greek people who came here in the late 1700s to inhabit our wonderful area. And they're still here, and they're still wonderful, and we want to celebrate a joining of a sister city with the same name in Naas Smurni. We also have Polly Hillier. Polly is from Saint...
I'm from Saint Augustine, Florida, Saint Buttish, and I'm representing the Council General Dimitris Spatos from Tampa, the Hellenic Republic Consulate Office.
I couldn't have said it better. Thank you. And we have Honorable Greg Holbrook is our Director of the Museum, of course.
Never been more to his honorable thing.
And I'm sorry.
You don't know me.
I'm Leanne Bennett. I am Chairwoman of the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
Excellent. There you go, for your meeting. All right, pronounce this for me one more time. It's Naas Smurni. Naas Smurni.
Yes, and if we could please acknowledge Kelly for her hard work putting this together after two and a half years.
Yes. All right, so whereas Naas Smurni is a municipality in southern suburb of Athens, Greece, and is named after the former Greek city Smyrna, whereas New Smyrna Beach celebrates the heritage of early Hellenian Greek settlers who arrived with Dr. Andrew Turnbull in 1768. And whereas this historic British colony was named after Dr. Turnbull's wife, wife's hometown of Smyrna, Greece, and all of us husbands in the audience can understand that. Whereas in 2019, the city of New Smyrna Beach extended an invitation to the mayor of Naas Smurni Stavros in an effort to establish friendship and understanding between the citizens of New Smyrna Beach and the municipality of Naas Smurni. I know butchering it every time, I'm sorry. Whereas, on behalf of the Greek Consulate General's office located in Tampa, Florida, they accepted offer of friendship and expressed their willingness and desire to actively embrace a partnership involving education, culture, and friendship. Whereas the recognition of our first official sister city, this is our first, we have another one, I think, in the works, of the city in France. But this should be recognized as a fitting occasion to commemorate the significant impact of an alliance which could bring limitless possibilities. Now therefore, I wrestle and mayor the city of New Smyrna Beach to hereby proclaim the municipality of Naas Smurni and the city of New Smyrna Beach as sister cities. From the small beginning, we hope this partnership will continue for many generations, fostering educational, economic, and professional exchanges. We look forward to an exciting future. And I think you had just a few words to share on behalf of someone else?
Thank God he didn't come from Tampa, though, guys. Your Honor and Commissioners, he said, "When I was first invited by the AHEPA organization to attend the annual celebration at the Odyssey Memorial in Smyrna Beach two years ago, I couldn't help believe, couldn't believe that I was reading the invitation, New Smyrna Beach. New Smyrna, this must be a mistake by AHEPA. They probably wanted to write something else. New Smurni is a municipality in the Athens metropolitan area, but it's landlocked and it doesn't have a beach. Luckily, we live in the age of the internet, so soon enough I found out about the history of the place, and I was amazed, more than 1,000 settlers from several locations in the Mediterranean, and among them 500 Greeks. Unfortunately, the settlers faced terrible and inhumane conditions and then fled to Saint Augustine. This is a piece of history which until recently was unknown in Greece. It is, however, very important for the Greek Americans for whom this historical event is as important as Plymouth Rock for the Americans of Anglo-Saxon origin." And I'm gonna skip down here and say, "So both places were built by settlers leaving their homeland in need. Both arrived in their new homes full of hopes of building a happier and healthier life. Both cities are connected directly with the mother city of Smurna, an ancient city where civilization bloomed for thousands of years. And although the settlers who arrived here came from several places around the Mediterranean, Menorca, Corsica, Italy, et cetera, the connecting glue in this newer relationship between the two cities and inevitably, the Greek-American community still present in the area and faithful. I'm certain that both cities will benefit from the upcoming sister cities relationship, and may this be the beginning of many new friendships. Thank you."
Come on that way, Jake. There you go, hold up. And three, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
We're probably not streaming either.
Polly?
I don't know.
Yeah?
I have a comment.
Okay, right now? I have a comment from Commissioner Clody.
I really like this idea. Two things I want to point out, that the city in Greece is only one and a half miles from the Parthenon, so it's really almost like a real inner-city suburb. And in addition to getting a sister city, we're getting a sister-in-law city, because they have a sister city in Croatia. So our family's expanding.
Excellent. Thank you.
Redefines the word "growing too quickly."
All right, next item up is a presentation by Faith Miller and some of our colleagues over at UCF's Florida Solar Energy Center, a solar feasibility assessment report. And for this and future presentations, again, we're just really trying to beat the clock here. Know that we have read all the staff report, and we'll try to hit you with pertinent questions, but just put some shortening in it where you can. We appreciate it.
Okay, just good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. As you know, we entered into agreement with the UCF's Florida Solar Energy Center to evaluate 18 of our facilities. You received one report on the city hall annex back in July, and they're here to present the, they have a very brief presentation to go over on the other 17 and other energy efficiencies that we can do. So Chuck Withers, Don Metzger, and Karen Fanati are here from UCF. They're gonna do a quick presentation for you.
Thank you. Please come ahead. Thank you all for sticking with us to this point, and we appreciate it sincerely.
Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity. My name's Chuck Withers with Florida Solar Energy Center, and just very quickly, wanted to recognize, besides the three of us that are here, Colin Kettles, who couldn't be here, and Janet McElvein, as well as Keith Schwalter, who helped a lot in this project, so. Okay, to advance. Okay, there we go. So this is part of our project team. Very quickly, our center is, we focus on energy research, but we're also very involved in energy conservation types of projects, and we've been around for a long time, actually since 1976. And we have about 65 researchers and about 20 or 30 support staff there. Okay, so the assessment scope of what was our project and what were we charged to do was to, again, look at the feasibility of solar for certain city buildings, as well as energy conservation measure opportunities. So we looked at a total of 18 buildings, 17 of these buildings of which were actually are occupied. The one building was the city annex, which is under current renovation. So again, with looking at the potential for solar, and some are familiar with the term net zero energy, and the goal is to, if you can, implement enough solar at a particular site to offset the total energy, annual energy use of that building. So that was, we wanted to look for the potential of that on a building-by-building site. And part of that is, involves going in, site visiting, looking at each building, going through those, accounting for what efficiency measures are already there. At this time, I'd also like to recognize that as we were going through buildings, like just the city hall here and other buildings, it was really nice to see that the city's already implementing some of the recommendations that we came out of our, you know, in our findings. So things like LED lighting and lighting controls, and some of your new buildings that have been constructed are already implementing these things. So this is, it's, you know, I think some of these things aren't even new to you, so it's good to see that. So with the audit, we evaluate not just what's on-site, but we also take into account up to about two years of annual utility billing. And utility billing helps us to see, really, if there's, for a given amount of square footage of a building and the type of building, if that looks to be higher than what we might expect. So that kind of helps to create some flags of buildings to prioritize. Okay, so with that, very quickly, the top five conservation measures that we came up for your existing buildings that we looked at, lighting control, and in the, you know, the larger report, there's building-by-building that we indicate where were these, you know, where these would be applicable. Retrocommissioning, replace fluorescent fixtures with LED lighting, and that's our, again, some things that you're already doing in some areas. And then, as well as fluorescent fixtures, it's some of the high bay, high ceiling type HID metal halide fixtures. There's LED fixtures, you know, available for those now that look pretty promising. And then the other in the top five was to replace old straight-cool, just air conditioning-only air conditioning units that are in that three-to-five-ton range with, you know, with a six, about a 16-seer efficiency air conditioner, if you can get that, with a heat pump. And then again, we've got a number of buildings that fall under that, that type of thing. And so when we say replace old, that's usually, we think, around nine years or older, and it is kind of a case-by-case, you know, situation. But as these units get older, that's, you know, really ideal time to change these out, and you'll see that energy drop. Okay, so part of this evaluation of determining, were our recommendations economical? Do they look reasonable? We actually, you know, not knowing what any given budget's gonna be, or how much money you have, we wanted to evaluate each individual measure just on its own. And so that's what we did, and so we're just showing a summary here, for instance, of the lighting control. We indicate the expected lifespan of that, and then the annual return on investments are really good in general. And so it's sort of in order, right? Lighting controls, retrocommissioning looks good. Retrocommissioning was recommended for two buildings. They happen to be the two buildings that are using the highest amount of utility power. And then we have replacing high-ceiling HID lighting with LED, and then replacing straight-cool at the bottom. So you can see that, you know, annual investment starts to drop quite a bit as you get down lower, but nevertheless, these are the top recommendations. So there was some additional energy conservations to consider. We didn't throw them into primary recommendations, but we put them in there for your staff to consider, because it is, again, there might involve more information to determine if something like ceiling air ducts, you actually have to kind of do a little additional testing and evaluation to determine if there's certain, you know, ducts that need to have that done. But we had identified a couple buildings that, based on where the ducts were located and so on, and the age of the building, that might look good for them. Thermostat set point change, again, every degree that you raise the thermostat in cooling will tend to decrease the cooling energy use by about 8%. Again, that is a case-by-case thing. If you start dealing with the comfort of people and they're not happy, productivity is affected and it's not worth it. So it's just, you know, something you can try and implement, and if it works, great. If not, you can, you know, not use that. The last one was, we've done this in research and measured this, but painting older metal roofs with a white reflective paint does a lot to reflect a lot of the solar heat energy back off of the building. Again, this is only recommended if you have, you know, where you expect maybe about nine years of life left in that roof. It is something that, you know, if you're gonna replace the roof within five years, I wouldn't do that. Okay, at this point, what I want to do is turn it over to Mr. Donard Metzger, who's gonna talk to us about the solar side of this.
So my name is Donard Metzger. I'm a solar contractor for the Florida Solar Energy Center. We looked at the 18 buildings that you proposed and essentially visited each one of the buildings to see how much PV we could put on, and essentially what their orientation was, and ran a program called PV Watts. That's a program that's been built by the US Department of Energy, and essentially gives us a way to look at the orientation of the building, the tilt, and then figure out how much energy it would produce on an annual basis. After doing that, we did come up with the fact that four of the buildings could be net zero, and you can see those in the next slide, which I don't seem to be able to advance. There we go. Oh, it's on the side. Okay, and so the ones in green there, you can see are the ones that came up as zero-energy buildings. And so what that means is that those buildings could produce as much energy as they use on a yearly basis. You need to look at that yearly, because it's a seasonal thing. So the other buildings that are there, we showed how much that they could produce based on the size of the system that we could actually put on the roof that was there. And so when we look at what they could produce based on their energy bills over a yearly period, we could then figure out what percentage we could offset those electrical bills with the solar that would go on those buildings. And that's gonna be illustrated on this next slide here. And you can see what each one of those 17 buildings would then be offset by with the solar that would be added on to those. So the solar-electric economics looks something like this. First of all, it's not a wise idea to build a larger system than you need in terms of what your energy usage is, because you don't get paid back correctly, or at least at a good clip there, if you oversize the system. So we don't want to oversize anything, 100% would be a maximum, that would be net zero. And so four of those buildings could do that. Install cost for a commercial-type PV is somewhere around $1.75 to $2 a watt. So if we know the size of the system, we can figure out how much it would cost, and then the rest of these numbers fall in place here. The cost considerations are the location of the system, the mounting methods that would be used, and the type of panel that you would put on there. If space is not an issue, you're gonna use a typical panel, and it'll be a lower-cost panel in terms of dollars per watt. The contractor's gonna select the panel and offer that to you along with the price. Life expectancy of PV panels, they're warranted for 25 to 30 years. So at the end of that period, that doesn't mean they stop producing, it just means that they have degraded to a certain point, and there are warranties that essentially tell you how much they're gonna produce at the end of that 25-year warranted period. And typically, for a 25-year power warranty, you're gonna get about 80% of what the panel originally produced at the end of those 25 years. So if you had a 100-watt panel at the beginning, 25 years later, it will produce at least 80 watts. So they won't stop working, they do continue to degrade, but that life expectancy is not meaning that, you know, it's gonna die in 25 or 30 years. Especially if it's installed correctly and it's a quality product, it'll last a whole lot longer. The degradation numbers, as I spoke about, were about half a percent a year. They're relatively maintenance-free. I have a system on my home, I've not done any maintenance to it in 10 years, the rain washes it clean. There's not really any problems that are typically associated with solar systems that are installed by a quality individual. And so don't buy the cheapest one you can get, make sure you're just buying one that's being, you know, put on by a respectable contractor. The ROI on the systems, they've calculated out to be 2% to 3%. Mature market, I'm not a finance guy, I can't really speak too much to the finances there. But the total potential to offset your electric use is somewhere around 40% with the solar. If you incorporate the other energy-saving measures that Chuck has talked about here, you could possibly save up to 47% of the energy or the cost of energy on your current buildings, in particularly these 18 that we spoke about here. That's all we have here for that. Any questions?
All right, for the sake of time, I'd say probably best to do this. This is a deep topic that we can spend a lot of time on. So why don't we have the experts here that gave us a ton of great information? I really do appreciate it. We should just stick out with us tonight. Any questions for them? So we don't have to renotice those. So on a future agenda, let's have a discussion about some direction to give staff on this, but I don't know, I don't think we have enough time to debate it healthily tonight. But any questions for the experts? Vice Mayor?
I read through the whole report, and I was really impressed by it. Now, I used to have a system on my house up north.
Used to?
I moved. I'm here. It was a 10K system, it was really totally reliable and everything. So my concern is, a lot of these buildings are too small to really make a good, effective project. I saw two or three of them. One that you didn't highlight was the police department, and that didn't show a great return of investment, but it would be a great cost reduction, because it's out in the open, it's got a nice flat roof. They just use a tremendous amount of energy.
Correct.
So I think that should also be a consideration for us, because it would lower our bill.
It would, yeah.
And I like the LED, especially the sports complex.
Commissioner Sacks indicated he didn't have any questions for the experts. Any questions, Commissioner McGurk?
First of all, thank you for waiting. Remind you why you didn't get an apology.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, so historically, any time that I've looked into solar, the cost of putting it in far exceeds the overall value you'll get out of it. So the panels may work for 25 or 30 years. There's a lot of equipment and other things you're gonna be replacing.
I wouldn't say there's a lot of equipment that would be replaced, that's a misnomer. Number one, you're dealing with a product that has a 25-year warranty. If you can tell me another product out there that has that, I'd...
Well, my roof does, but I guarantee that I never got that warranty covered. But I guess...
Then we're in agreement with that.
Yeah, the basic question is this. Historically, it has been something that you did if you could not get regular utilities to, or it was too costly to get, and you would get some sort of solar. Is that still the case?
I would say not. I'm a perfect example. I put a system on my home. Now, obviously, I'm a contractor, so I can do that on my own. But having said that, with the rates that we're seeing today, $2 a watt is not that expensive, especially if we're talking about residential. And the reason for that is because we still have tax credits that are available for it. So right now, 26% of your system cost could be taken care of by the federal government. Now, that's a residential application, not a commercial. Having said that, there are occasionally commercial rebates that are available. Speaking to the fact that it's something that you only do if you don't have power, that's not the case. The cost of PV now has come down drastically. We're talking about being able to buy just a standard panel at 50 cents a watt. I can go out today and buy that. I don't have to look for it, I can just simply pull it up, and I'm good.
That's great. I just wanted to point out that historically, and I will tell you that, the LED lighting is not there yet. I'm changing out my LED lights at my business right now, and I can, I can promise you, it is not cost-effective, it is simply something I do because the good of the idea of it. But it is not a cost-effective measure.
I would say that's not where we are with PV, though, right now. The advancements that have been made, I mean, I've been around this since 1983, and I'm here to tell you, the advancements that are there now are actually at a point where it is cost-effective. We do see payoffs. If you can get a federal rebate, that payoff can be somewhere around 10 years or less even, depending on the size of the system and the cost of the installation. The key here is, is it's a 30-year product, and it needs to be installed correctly, so that you don't have those issues with things breaking down, not working later on, or it just being a mess. It's all about quality.
That was my question to you, and you're saying it's profitable, it pays off, it makes sense, dollars and cents to do it, and I'm absolutely happy and ecstatic that we have gotten to that point in solar. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Hartman, any questions?
Your price per watt, that includes the installation, but also?
It does. Now, that price that you see there is variable. Each application is very different. If it's a typical roof that you see, which in commercial terms would be like a TPO roof, $2 a watt is completely achievable. And there are customers, or I mean contractors out there, that are installing it at that price. Now, the size of the system is gonna matter, so the more you're putting in, the larger the system, the cheaper it's gonna be, so those numbers can come down. But you can go out today and get a system installed for about $2 a watt.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all the time and the effort. I kind of was the one who spearheaded all this years ago, when we were looking at building Live Oak, so thank you for all that. And the additional information we got on energy saving as a whole, I think, was above and beyond what I was looking for, so we appreciate that also. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just to be clear, I think we had our staff and some future agenda that's a little lighter than this one. If you can slide this back on for a discussion, that we can help give a strategy and talk about this, because I agree, I thought there was a lot of great information. I'd love to get some consensus on some initiatives that we can take. Some of this, I think, is, you know, low-hanging fruit, to use the term. So again, thank you all, thank you for your patience tonight, we really appreciate it. Thanks. Next item up is public participation. This is your chance to speak on any item on the agenda or on your mind. You'll be limited to three minutes. Anyone for public participation? If you'd like to speak after her, feel free, come on down, queue up. All right. I appreciate it.
Leanne Conrad, on behalf of the Canal Street Historic District Business Association. First of all, I want to thank the commission, the mayor, and city staff for listening to the business merchants on the parking problems that we have in the area. I'm happy that you're having a public meeting, I believe, on the 18th. I want to thank Brian Fields for coming to our board meeting last night. Appreciate the time that he took with us. One thing came up after you left, and that's the fact that we could get three more parking spaces. If you take the stripes off of the east side of Live Oak adjacent to Christmas Park, because the buses don't park there anymore, we'd have three additional parking spaces. And thank you for also looking at our request to have Music Bus Hope to see you all there on the 7th.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question for Lilian.
Sure, Lilian can get a question for you.
I'm sorry to trouble you. Lilian, we had...
Go ahead.
We had a bit of a problem when we had one of our independent film crews do their filming on Canal Street. I fielded several complaints from some of the merchants. I wonder, would it be possible for the merchants to get together with their activities committee if they have significant concerns about events that are upcoming on the street? I know that sometimes there are mixed reviews as to the venues that occur on the street, and I want everybody to be happy. So if you could ever, you know, fill me in if there's any problems, or major objections to street closings in particular.
I would like to thank city staff for responding as quickly as they did to the concerns of the merchants when they found out that the street was closed on a Friday afternoon and they had no knowledge of it. Nancy Maddox came to our block party meeting, which is our member meeting, on the first Monday of the month, and spent an hour and a half talking with the merchants that attended that meeting. She was extremely helpful, apologetic, and we hope this isn't gonna happen again, so... And I think the city has a procedure in place now to be able to address those issues in the future. Is that correct, College?
Yes.
Lilian, please share my apologies as well. We may not have vetted that as well as possible.
Well, it's a learning experience for all of us.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for all you do.
Randy.
Good evening, Randy Herman. A concern and then a good thing. The last couple of weeks around the construction site next door with the nursing home on Faulkner and... and Washington, the people that work at the church and people come in and going to the store have run into continued problems with the staff there, and they've had trucks pulled out into Washington so far that really have been dangerous of accidents. I think the police were called twice today. The thing, my concern is that the, the crew has been extremely rude, and today, they actually blocked off the parking lot to the church and said, "We couldn't enter." And till the pastor of the church said, "Look, it's my church, I need to get in," and they started to back off. So, I don't know how to go about that, but I just wanted to alert you that it's been bubbling for about two weeks, and some of the behavior is getting to a kind of, not a very friendly level. So, I appreciate looking into that. And the next thing is, I want to, on change perhaps, and speak to you as the chair of the neighborhood council, and I'd like to speak to Chief Coven and Lieutenant Key's proposal that'll be coming up for the drones. I think that's coming up right under consent agenda. It was reviewed by the neighborhood council, and I think it was a pretty lively and, and depth discussion, not only by the council, but the community and your staff, and a great presentation. And I think it covered all of the concerns, and there are many, of course, as we look into surveillance. All of us have some questions about surveillance and, and the trust around, issue around what that means. But security is an issue that we are all facing in our life, and I think this proposal has been well thought out. Most of the criteria that the, the neighborhood council was concerned about have been addressed, and we were pleased, the fact that the chief said that they will come back after the project is in for a while and review about its progress. So, I just want to say the neighborhood council supports this proposal for drones. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the public, going once, twice, three times. All right. Next item up is consent agenda. We have fourteen items. Gentlemen, A through N, we'll begin with the vice mayor. Would you like to pull any item from the consent agenda?
G for comments.
Pulling item G for comments. Commissioner Sacks, anything to pull from the consent?
Uh, G, uh, he pulled G.
G's pulled. Is that it?
Um, H.
G and H. Commissioner McGurk, anything to pull?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
E.
E. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agendas, item, agenda, items A through N, excluding item E, G, and H?
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
City clerk.
Vice Mayor Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Thank you all who stuck around for your item on the consent agenda, we appreciate it. Item E, who pulled that one? Commissioner Hartman, was that you?
Yes.
Item E. What's your question or comment?
My question is, is that we went out for a bid for either replacement or extension. I think we went for the replacement part of it, but there was no details or drawings as to exactly what we were doing. We continually have the same problem with that particular ramp, once the beach sand goes away. So, I was curious as to how we're going to resolve that issue going forward.
Well, DMC, we're the, the engineers on the project, and I know Kyle has, Kyle has looked at it as well. And, um, I'm, Kyle, I was going to ask him to explain it a little better on the replacement. Kyle?
Faith has a question for you. He's coming. Kyle did a great job at the Indian River Lagoon.
Yes, he did.
Councilwoman Deb Denny saw me today, Kyle, and she specifically commented and sent her, her thanks for your participation, said you did a good job, and we all agree.
She's asking about the replacement on Esther Street.
Okay. What's your question? So, we continually have this problem with this particular ramp, you know, when the sand comes and goes. And with the replacement that we're projecting, there was no drawings or anything in our packet, so I was just wondering how we're going to resolve those issues long-term.
It's, it's a deeper embedment, Commissioner, so we're actually going to remove and install the, the lower platform deck at the beach interface.
Okay.
Probably, I think it's two to three feet below what we have realized historically has been the washout level.
Okay.
So, it's, it's not, it's no longer just going to be, you know, tapered into the current level, it's going to be embedded below it, backfilled, and then, whoops, we'll have room for washout in the future.
Okay. All right. That's my question.
The elevations are on our plans.
Yeah.
All right. Do I have...
We can give you a copy of the plans if, if you'd prefer.
Take his word for it.
Okay.
All right. Do we have a motion on item E? Motion to approve.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item G, Vice Mayor, you pulled it first, we'll let you go, and then Jake, we can come out with comments, questions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I aired. I don't need to pull that item.
All right, it's already pulled for Vice Mayor then. Go ahead.
There was another, but...
That's all right. You pulled H, right?
I, I approved the change order. The changes in the building will raise the, uh, the level of design, which is a good thing. And more importantly, on the outside part, it's going to replace the entrance sidewalk in front of the building. I think there's a, what I've always felt is a little problem in our land development code. When you have something like the assisted living facility being built there, it's going to be a beautiful new facility, but it's kind of the crappy old sidewalk. I think that we should amend our ordinances, if necessary, to require them to upgrade whatever's out there in the frontage, so that we have a nice uniform appearance.
Okay. Commissioner McGurk, comment.
Yeah. You know, we do have that requirement, at some point gets tripped. I know that, but we're going to, we have a lot of businesses that have to do that, and then they ask a question, "What am I paying impact, impact fees for if I'm paying to redo the entire sidewalk and curbing on public property?" So, that's, so it's, I, may be some inconsistencies there.
Okay. It's probably worth a, a future conversation. Any other comments on G? Was that your only comment? And you did have comments on G?
Yes, and if I'm correct, that is the construction change order.
Yes, for City Hall, yes, yep.
And are we also referring to a change order because of termite activity?
It was, I think they found termite activity in the building. Michelle, you want to briefly?
Good evening. I'll be brief. So, the bid documents had a bunch of verify and field conditions, you know, during design, our structural engineer could only go so far. He could only crawl up under that building to a certain point. So, once we hired our contractor, there were, those locations needed to be exposed. And once they were exposed, we realized the extent of termite damage that we have dealt with. We tented the building in two thousand and eighteen, we have, you know, we have all the paperwork to support that. There is not a termite issue today. But once we saw the damage was greater than was perceived, the decision was to pull the whole floor up. Let's see it all. We have to see every joist, make sure the top side of the joist isn't damaged, and upon that is when we made the decision to increase the structural loading on the floor, which is the brunt of this change.
And this is only for the portion that may have become two stories, or is this for the chamber?
This is the two-story area. Yes, the office space only, correct.
So, will it prohibit us from going to a second floor someday?
Nope.
No.
We will still have two stories on that side for the offices, engineering and planning up on the second floor and building department on the first floor.
I know you can't foresee everything, but it's an additional sixty thousand dollars. And I know when Commissioner McGurk rightfully called it a labor of love, you know, I, I know there, there could be some unforeseeable changes. Do you see anything that might be looming? Other than this?
Not, not from an unforeseen. We have opened everything at this point. The floor was, you know, the can that was closed, per se. You know, once we go vertical, we'll deal with those issues that arise at that point. But for now, no, we have no issues that we are aware of at the moment.
Thank God.
Yeah. I think it's worth, worth noting, too, that this is not, you know, every, every capital project, especially one of a historical restoration nature, you go in with a contingency. I think this one, we may have even put a little extra in that, maybe not, but this is within that contingency, and we still have, I think it was like two thirty or something was a contingency. This is sixty. So, we, we still have quite a bit left, and this is probably the biggest unknown that we had, which was, you know, you don't know what's under there. So, you know, hopefully, we're in good shape, but we'll, we'll come in on time and on budget. All right, Michelle?
Thanks, Michelle.
This is adding thirty days, that's the part that, that I saw. All right, do I have a motion on item G?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clody?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thanks.
All right. So, you had pulled item H, you're telling me now you don't...
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I aired, and I'm going to rescind that.
Well, we can't rescind it, we already passed the other, so if you just make a motion to approve H.
I make a motion to approve H.
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clody?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Next item up, so that is the whole consent agenda, right? Next item up, seven B, license agreement with the Flagler merchants.
Mayor Commissioners, two sentences. The Flagler Avenue Business Association retained an attorney who drafted a new policy of what could be engraved on the bricks located in the sidewalk area of Flagler Avenue. The city attorney's office has completed a legal analysis and has prepared a new license agreement that is attached for the city commission's review and consideration along with the engraving policy.
Thank you, Tony. Discussion by the commission. Questions, comments?
I, I have one question.
Vice Mayor, yes.
Uh, we've left it up to them to approve these things, which is basically a blanket approval. Why do they have to review pet statements?
I think it's...
Kenneth Bohannon, Cornell Law Group, and I represent Flagler Avenue Business Association. We created this policy in order to conform with the First Amendment rights and the ability to express First Amendment statements within a limited public forum. And so, when we went through the case law and went through existing policies, this is the kind of range that we're looking for in order to make sure that we're not overstepping or stepping over somebody's First Amendment rights and still keeping the scope of what can be engraved in a limited fashion.
So, you believe there's a problem with pet statements in particular?
Well, pet names can, people can be very creative with their pet names. They can name their pet after their favorite four-letter word. So, I think we just, I think that was the, the notion is just allowing some control over that. It's how I interpret it, at least.
You mean fluffy?
That's correct.
Yeah. Fluffy, that's, that's the one I was thinking. Other questions or comments on this item?
I have one comment. I'm just disappointed that we're not allowing palm trees.
I apologize for the disappointment. I look forward to helping you, uh, better next time.
That's okay. I got them, I got them over to MDC. Commissioner Sacks?
So, a quick question and a comment for Mr. Bohannon. So, we had an errant brick that kind of caused some angst in the neighborhood. Can we be assured that we won't see bricks that may be offensive to the community in, in the way of many different means that, that could be offensive? Or, or in opposition to other people's ideals? It's something innocuous.
It depends on what you think is offensive. The word, or the name Susan may be offensive to you, and, you know, we can't prohibit everything, but this framework allows us to govern the, the type of items that can be placed in the bricks. And that's the idea, is that we're trying to limit those things to things that ought to be on the street and in our community.
Thanks. I wish you luck with that.
All right. Any other comments on this item by the commission?
I just want to thank Chris Ryan for his hard work on the license agreement.
Yeah, absolutely. He worked very hard on it, and we had some good collaboration back and forth in order to create the policies that you have in front of you.
Yeah, no, he, he did. He, he talked to constitutional professors and looked high and low, and so, yeah, good, good work by the, the team. Thank you, Kenny and Faba as well. You know, the goal, the goal of this is just to create something that can continue this great tradition and make it, you know, a Flagler place that everyone can enjoy and leave their memories. And so, I don't have a brick on Flagler yet, so I'm glad the program's coming back. Do we have a motion on this item?
Yes. I make a motion to approve it, and can't wait to get my pet brick.
For fluffy, right?
No fluffy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
City clerk.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Thank you all involved. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Tony. Next item up, eight A, quasi judicial public hearing. If it's as long as the last one, we're done for. This is for a dune walkover, CCSL one dash two oh. Gentlemen, now's our chance for any expertise communications on this item. We'll start with the vice mayor. Anything to disclose?
Nothing.
Commissioner Sacks?
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner McGurk?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
Nothing.
And I also have none that I'm aware of. Mr. Fields, are we still under oath and qualified? Correct, Carrie?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Are you familiar with this application?
Yes.
Is it consistent with the comp plan, and what is your recommendation?
Yes, it is. Staff recommends approval. It's a dune walkover at fourteen nineteen North Atlantic Avenue. In two thousand and thirteen, the city commission approved moving the CCSL line approximately fifty-one feet further west. And one of the conditions there was that the only improvement allowed within the buffer area would be a dune walkover, structure to the beach. buffer area would be a dune walkover structured to the beach, that is what is proposed herein. It meets all of the criteria in the code for CCSL, staff recommends approval.
Okay, were any of the members of the commission or the applicant like to question Mr. Fields on his testimony?
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
The structure is a considerable distance from the beach, how long is the proposed walkover?
251 feet.
Okay, are there similar walkovers on any adjoining properties?
Yes.
I didn't see them on the aerial.
I didn't either, but-
There's a few.
I'm gonna introduce-
Immediately.
Senior Planner Jake Baker.
Within a house or two.
He can address this question.
Yeah.
My name is Jake Baker, I have a bachelor's degree in history and a master's degree in urban planning, design, and development. I looked at aerials of the area.
Do you swear from that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
Alright, and then, do we need to qualify him as an expert witness? Probably. Alright, so, you gave your qualifications, are there any objections qualifying him as an area, as an expert witness? Hearing none, he's determined to be an expert in the area of land development and qualified to give opinion testimony, thank you, sir.
Yes, I did visit the site, and I looked at aerial maps, and there are dune walkovers, not immediately adjacent, but within, you know, a couple houses either way, there are dune walkovers out to the toe of the dune.
Okay. Any other questions, Vice Mayor?
No.
Other questions by the commission of the city?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Sacks?
Jake, if you please. I thought I read in the narrative on the item that there will be disruption to the dune system or the plants, the native plants. Who monitors whether the applicant is going back in and restoring the dune to its proper-
Well, we would meet with the crew that's gonna put the dune walkover in and basically assess where the post are gonna go in, and determine what's gonna come out, and then we'll come up with a dune replanting plan, which will have to relocate the plants that they're coming out, or they'll have to plant new plants where the ones were on the property. And that'd be a final landscape inspection plan as part of this project.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for city staff? Is the applicant here, would like to make a presentation? Alright, applicant's available for questions, any questions of the applicant by the commission? Hearing no questions, will not hear from members of the public, which is, did you, did you have some you wanted to present?
No, no, no.
Alright, members of the public on this item, yes, go ahead. Please limit your remarks to items which you have personal knowledge.
Martin 618 South Pine.
Do you swear from that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
It appeared to me to be a discrepancy just in the write-up. In other words, earlier in the whole report, it talks about how you have to restore all the vegetation that's disturbed when the crossover is built, but if you looked at the very last page on the waiver of application, it references no planting anticipated. It's number 15, and that, to me, that inconsistency could potentially, shall we say, be confusing. Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments from the public, and then that staff, if you have a response to that? Any other public comments on this, either for or against, seeing none, we'll close that, and comments on that?
The only replanting required is for what's disturbed, for the actual insertion of the poles in the ground in that immediate area, there's no other disturbance anticipated or shown on the plans.
Okay. Alright, any closing remarks from the applicant or the city, seeing none, we'll close the quasi judicial public hearing, we'll now consider the application number CCSL 1-20. It's our motion to approve application. So move.
Second.
Any comments? Non-city clerk, color roll, please.
Vice Mayor Clooney?
No.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Mayor Owen?
Yes, although I wish we'd had time for more dialogue, I'd like to have understood what my colleagues saw, but we'll get the next one. Alright, that item is approved, item 8B has been already taken care of. Item C, number 10-20, second reading of public hearing, which would amend the farmers' market regulations, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance 1020, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the land development regulations, amending Article 5, zoning districts, Section 50402, specific regulations by district, MU, mixed use, central business, B2, neighborhood business, and B5, planned shopping center zoning districts, to revise the conditions associated with farmers' markets, providing for codification, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Bob?
I'm gonna be very short for you, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it.
Basically, we had some issues with the farmers' market, we had some vendors that were serving food, we came in front of this commission, y'all directed us to come up with legislation to kind of limit that, but to allow that, so this is, we're bringing to you the actual regulation that would put that in force, that they've actually been operating under, based on the guidelines that were set the last time we were here for this item.
Appreciate it, it's a public hearing, any members of the public wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, we have a motion by the commission to adopt ordinance 10-20.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk, feed color roll, please.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Clooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes, 10-20 is adopted, thank you. Ordinance D, or item D, ordinance 3719, second reading of public hearing related to the comprehensive plan, the element for public school facilities, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 3719, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, amending Chapter 14, public school facilities element, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Bob?
I'll be very brief with this one as well for you, Mr. Mayor. Basically, this is one of the elements in our comprehensive plan, we are looking to update all our elements this year in our comprehensive plan that was not updated last year, this is the next one, it's in line. Basically, we got with the school board, and they helped us fill this portion out, we would send that off to the Department of Environmental Protection, and we sent it off to VGMC, we sent it off to the Department of Economic Opportunity, we'll send back letters of no comment, including our consultant that's doing our parent review of the work that we're performing, and staff has recommended approval of that, and subject to any questions you may have.
Okay, it's a public hearing, any members of the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, we have a motion to adopt ordinance 37-19.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Vice Mayor, you sound like you wanted to discuss this.
Not really, because there's tremendous amount of-
Don't let me drag you into it, I just thought you did.
Just that it's very technical, and basically, I believe it's just updating our figures and our backgrounds and our statistics, and it's, I'm glad to see everything's up to date.
Okay. No other discussion, City Clerk, feed color roll, please.
Vice Mayor Clooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes, ordinance 37-19 is adopted. Hey, to Bob and Mr. Baker, really good staff reports, really appreciate the, doing a good job on this, very thorough. Next up, ordinance is first readings. Video hasn't been working all night. Yeah, the internet was down in this area, and so, normally when that happens, he records it, and he'll be able to post it later, so.
Doesn't, it's a citywide.
I know. Alright, nine A, B, and C are all related to a first reading which would annex some land on Temple Street, city attorney will read those together.
Ordinance 1120, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach, point 24 plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Temple Street between Lake Drive and Jungle Road, addressed as 132 Temple Street, providing for redefining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone 4, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 12-20, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point 24 plus or minus acres of land located on the west side of Temple Street between Lake Drive and Jungle Road, addressed as 132 Temple Street, from Volusia County Urban Medium Intensity to City Medium Density Residential, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 1320, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point 24 plus or minus acres of property located on the west side of Temple Street between Lake Drive and Jungle Road, addresses 132 Temple Street, from Volusia County R4A Urban Single Family Residential Airport Overlay to City R2A Single Family Residential Airport Overlay, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Alright, the second readings and quasi judicial public hearing for those items will be on February 25th, 2020. Next item's up, D, E, and F, city attorney.
Ordinance number 1420, an ordinance annexing into the city of New Smyrna Beach, point 27 plus or minus acres of property located on the northwest corner of Corbin Park Road and Juanita Drive, addressed as 2201 Juanita Drive, providing for defining boundaries of the city, designating the property within Commission Zone 4, providing for public hearing, providing for required filings, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 1520, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach amending the comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point 27 plus or minus acres of land located on the northwest corner of Corbin Park Road and Juanita Drive, addressed as 2201 Juanita Drive, from Volusia County Urban Low Intensity to City Low Density Residential, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps to show the area incorporated into the city, providing for public hearing, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance number 1620, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point 27 plus or minus acres of property located on the northwest side of Corbin Park Road and Juanita Drive, addressed as 2201 Juanita Drive, from Volusia County R4A Urban Single Family Residential Airport Overlay to City R2A Single Family Residential Airport Overlay, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Okay, city second readings and quasi judicial public hearing for those items will be on February the 25th, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to thank staff for all the work on this, if you guys don't remember, this was originally a county piece of property where we did a historic tree removal, we brought that up during that discussion about annexation, and staff stayed with it and brought out the finer parts of New Smyrna Beach, so we appreciate all of staff's work on that.
Excellent, good comment.
Mr. Mayor, what was the date of that second hearing?
February 25th, 2020. That's what it says on my script, is that wrong?
Okay, 'cause the ones before it, unless I heard it wrong, was the 23rd.
If I said that, it was wrong. Those February 25th, 2020 were for items A, B, and C, and for D, E, and F, all of them are February 25th.
Thank you.
Sorry, I may have said it wrong.
I got it.
Been a long night. Items G and H, city attorney will read the ordinances for the first time.
Ordinance number 1720, an ordinance amending the city of New Smyrna Beach comprehensive plan, changing the future land use designation of point 73 plus or minus acres of property generally located south of Woodland Avenue, north of Canal Street, west of Hickory Street, and east of Spruce Street, from city high density residential to city commercial, providing for amendment of the associated comprehensive plan maps, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date. Ordinance 1820, an ordinance of the city of New Smyrna Beach rezoning point 73 plus or minus acres of property located south of Woodland Avenue, north of Canal Street, west of Hickory Street, and east of Spruce Street, from city R4 multifamily residential to city B3 highway service business district, providing for conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Okay, the second readings and quasi judicial public hearings will be on February 25th, 2020. Thank you for being here tonight. Item I, city attorney will read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance number 1920, an ordinance approving the issuance by the Utilities Commission, city of New Smyrna Beach, Florida, of utility system improvement and refunding revenue certificates in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $85 million, providing for conflicting ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Okay, second reading of public hearing will be on February 25th, 2020. On that particular item, I'd like to thank Eifan from the UC for being here today, and also for responding to quite a few questions I sent over today related to that item, so look forward to more discussion on that on February 25th. Boards and Commissions, there's none on this agenda, however, there are four considerations on the February 25th agenda. We're accepting applications for the Airport Advisory Board, Building Trades Board, Code Enforcement, and Housing Authority, so if you're the public and interested, or all of us can help to try to, I've been personally trying to just raise the visibility of those and encourage people to apply. People I may not even care to support, but I feel the more applications we have in that process, the better. Mayor and Commissioner report this next item up, we'll go to Vice Mayor.
I've attended a number of things recently, especially down in Edgewater over the last weekend. It's encouraging to see that one of the projects that we support is part of the regional assurance plan, and that we have the foresight to budget the money for it. I would like to make sure we move ahead with that, get a design plan in, so we can start applying for all that money that they say is available, being the state, the county, and everybody else. Other than that, just on the last two items, H and I, I'm gonna take a very serious look at those, because I have a lot of concerns on that, but that's about it.
Okay, that was nine H and nine I, the rezoning and the revenue bonds?
No, G and H.
Okay, that's, alright, that's what I wanted to, G and H, got it, okay.
Okay.
Yep. Hate that they missed that comment. Commissioner Sacks, is that it, Vice Mayor?
Yes, so I can think of.
Commissioner Sacks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also attended the water summit of the Indian River Lagoon Council. I was not so much encouraged, except for the efforts of our city, Kyle Fegley, our reasonable assurance plan, option one, I hope that we get that shovel ready very soon, so that we can apply, and hopefully receive matching grants from coordinating agencies. I still have to say, on the discouraging part, Mosquito Lagoon is still declared impaired. It was never included in a B map, it was put upon us to have it in a reasonable assurance plan, and that always frightened me, because where will we get the money to further help with stormwater releases into the lagoon? I understand New Smyrna has done as good a job as expected, I would stress, and I don't expect to push it and ask for a vote, make a motion and ask for a vote, but I would ask staff again to consider, for all major outfalls of stormwater, that we include baffle boxes. It was actually put up on the screen what the exterior of a baffle box looks like, I was kind of shoved aside when I first started bringing up baffle boxes, but now it seems that they are the technology of the day, and I hope we can really improve water quality if we include those. The other thing is, I'm still very concerned about growth, irresponsible growth, I know we're all trying to make it better, and have us a sustainable, quality, smart, growth city, but there, you've heard of the term, the law of diminishing returns, how much can we grow even wisely and sustain that? Because there is a carrying capacity, there's only so much water, there's only so much room for more roads, which I don't necessarily, necessarily think is a good idea, I'd like to fix the roads we have, but again, we have a chance as a commission to start on the road to making things more livable, more sustainable, and making our residents feel safer, happier, and have better quality of life. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Commissioner McGurk, comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, one is the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, that I think everybody's talking about, that we were briefed on, spent about four hours there, in some ways it was great, in other ways, we are reminded that we need to do a lot more, we're just touching the tip of the iceberg. The good news is, is that the turnout was phenomenal, the turnout from citizens, the turnouts from electeds, and turnouts from staff, and as someone mentioned earlier, Kyle, Kyle did a fantastic job sitting up there as one of the attendees. So, I'm encouraged by that, I'm encouraged by a lot of the things that I'm seeing, and that's a good thing, and we need to just keep moving in a positive direction, recognizing the problems of our lagoon and our waterways, and do what we can to push this forward. I wanted to make a comment tonight, I had a number of people who wanted to come tonight for an issue, I encouraged them to stay home, because the other issue was gonna be so packed, and I was continuously texting tonight saying that the feed was not working right. Everything from, they can't hear, the sound's off, a lot of the same problems that I've heard throughout the time we've had this system. So I'm losing confidence in this video system, because I'm constantly being told by people that, the same problems we had from the beginning, the sound's wrong, the sound doesn't match, the voices don't match, the faces, and at two minutes, roughly two hours and 30 minutes, it was adjourned, and then the screens went blank. I don't know if that's due to internet, I don't know what's going on, but I was texted by three or four people tonight, who were still waiting to see if one of the issues that we postponed was gonna continue, was gonna be on, so at, you know, 10 o'clock tonight, they're wondering what's going on. So, that is a problem, and I think we've come far enough down this road where these kinds of little issues should be worked out, and if it was an internet outage tonight, that's great, it's coincidence, but I continue to hear from people that we still don't necessarily have this right, and we certainly need to work on fixing that, because the next time I tell people not to come, I'm not sure I have the confidence to do that and say you can watch it online. So anyway, I want to share that with everybody. The report, I asked Kelly to put something, to make copies and give it to you tonight. This is a stop sign issue between, on Faulkner, between Washington and US 1. The residents have done some pretty impressive things, the main one is, they have hit in the 90th percentile of getting everybody on the street to sign a petition and sign off in support of a stop sign. 75% is the mark that we like to see, it's very difficult, we had that discussion on this dais, so the impressiveness of a 90th, there was only one or two or three homes that they couldn't get to, one was a rental tenant, very impressive. So what they really wanted were some more extensive things on the street, and I asked them to take baby steps, and we, and we've come to the conclusion or the resolution that one stop sign on Louise, which basically is about halfway down the street, is the best way to take an approach to see what we can do to stop the speeding on the street, while at the same time minimizing what we need to do to do that. Stop signs easy to put in, it's cheap to put in, it can be taken out if it's a problem, but I think the citizens, they went in, they did this the right way, they contacted us, they contacted staff, they contacted me, we took them through the whole system over a period of months, and I have called and reached out to, including a former mayor who lives on the street, and confirmed that they're very supportive of wanting to go forward with a stop sign, so I hope you'll support me on that. Support them, more importantly, not me, support them, and so, I guess, is that a motion? Or is that, what do you need tonight to get the stop sign? A motion? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to put a stop sign at the intersection of Faulkner and Louise.
Second motion.
It's the most enthusiastic second I think I've ever heard. Any discussion? Uh, any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Have, have we done a speed study on that particular road? So we have an existing one? Okay, that was, my only concern was-
We did one just recently.
Okay, I just want to be consistent in what we do, as long as we have a before and after speed study to support anything that we do, it's a great documentation, so, I think it's a-
It's a similar problem what we had in Magnolia.
Right.
Speed is not really the big issue, it's the volume of traffic.
Right.
And it's becoming a safety issue more than anything else.
Okay. Done it?
That's fine.
So, you, you said you've encouraged them to take baby steps, which I like. I saw on one of the petitions, it may have just been inadvertent, or it may have been intentional, I think it was like the last page or second to last page, looked like they'd crossed out maybe the speed bumps and cushions, this one here, speed bumps and, speed cushions?
Yeah.
So are you, are you trying to say, "Let's try this, and then if needed, we can go further," right? Is it?
Exactly, we're gonna take the least impactful step, and then just take baby steps forward to try to meet the goal. And so, yes, speed bumps and cushions were what they originally wanted, and we have backed that down to one stop sign.
Okay. I, I agree with you that, I mean, I think it's impressive that they've come together and there's no, you know, the chamber's not full of folks that are, you know, this isn't divided, which, it's a small area, so probably easier to get there, but yeah, I, I support it. City Clerk, we had a motion in a second. If no other discussion or questions, City Clerk, if you'd call a roll.
Commissioner McGurk?
Yes.
Commissioner Sax?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Coloney?
Yes.
Commissioner Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Owen?
Yes. Is that it?
Thank you, I appreciate it, that's it, Mayor.
Vice, uh, sorry, Commissioner Hartman?
Yeah, I thought the water study was very good, I learned a lot of information, there's, we're making great strides, but the one thing that I took from that was from St. John's, where we may be able to tap into some resources if, if we look at the artificial turf at the sports center. Um, if we're gonna be able to save that amount of water, you know, maybe we can get some kind of a funding from that in some fashion, um, because that's what they were talking about, they were talking about the reduction of water usage. So if we're looking at a project that's gonna reduce the amount of water that we're using, maybe they would be interested in, in providing some funds for that. Um, I also saw in the email where, um, we're progressing on through the Echo Grant with that, so that's a great job for staff and David Ray for all the work that he's done. Um, also, when we attended the Black Hardees Festival, we were able to, um, do a ribbon cutting for the new park thing. I got a lot of comments on, "They've never seen playground equipment that nice." So, that also goes to, you know, to appreciation to staff for all the work that they did, um, selecting the vendor, the types of, of things. Um, I don't think there was a moment that the stuff wasn't being used the whole time that we were there. I mean, there were kids constantly playing on it. So, uh, thank, a big thank you to staff for all that they did with that, and we certainly do appreciate it.
That's it.
Alright, I have four, five things real quick, if I must. Uh, strategic planning workshop, I know staff talked to each of us, so I don't know where everybody fell out or what the discussion was, but, um, I, I guess, most people wanted to have that later, after the budget talks. I, I fell on the complete opposite spectrum of that, so I just wanted to campaign for a minute on, to me, I'd like to, first of all, just move as quickly as possible, and to me, knowing that would help inform, as we hear those budget discussions, I think knowing the strategic plan would help inform, you know, where we might want to be looking for potential increases or, uh, you know, savings and, and funding. So, uh, I guess I'd just ask, um, if you think there's any merit to that, talk to staff and, um, figure out if we can, you know, possibly support moving that, those strategic planning workshops sooner.
Well, I think I agree with you, Mayor. Um, I think what I'm hearing you say is, you know, we sit in strategic plan, we want to do something, that's time to refresh our memories on the strategic plan, and the issues that want to get accomplished is while we're going through the budget, so we're discussing those issues, is that?
Yeah, I'm saying, I'd, I'd like to know, like, if our, if our str, if our number one, let's see, this isn't it, so don't, don't take this and publish it as a headline, but if our number one priority is funding, you know, item X, let me just do that. Item X, I'd love to know that, so that as all the, so that as the directors come up and present their budgets, if it's not kind of circulating around item X, I can be looking for low-hanging fruit and say, you know, "That's a really low strategic priority, let's take that money and put it towards X." Um, so that was just my thought, again, uh, I, I submit that to you, staff will talk to you some more, and again, just trying to figure out the scheduling, uh, but just wanted to have that discussion here with you all. Three, four more items, uh, permits. Brian, I, I know your team is, is, is working hard, this isn't a slight to anybody in the way they're doing their job, but I continually hear, as I talk to the trades, um, you know, I ask them, "How's business?" And the answer is always, "It's great," but they still are having, um, you know, there's, it still takes time. We, we have the reputation in Volusia County as being the longest, uh, one to get permits, and I'm not talking about for the major big things like a borrow pit. I'm talking about for the fence job with a contractor that puts in fences in the city all day long, every day. So I'd love to see staff take, do, do something to figure out a way, to me, if it's a known vendor and they've got a reputation for doing the right thing, we should have some kind of a, a, I think other cities do this, we should have some kind of a fast lane where they can come in and they can walk out with that paper, so they can go do their business. And then if it's a complex job, or if it's a, you know, somebody we've had a problem with, at staff's discretion even, we can put them on a separate track, but I'd love to, to see us facilitating getting business done, because I don't know that we're, you know, I don't know that we're, we're helping ourselves. I guess the last thing I'd say on that is, you know, we've got the funding, if it's a, if it's a staffing issue, which it probably is, it's, it's just, may just be the, the quantity versus quali, quantity of people. If that's the case, we've got the funding. I mean, we've got, the building fund is sitting there, we've got the money, so I'd encourage you, use it to invest in the people, the technology, whatever it is to, to do that. So I know you wanted to say something there, what do you?
No, understood, uh, we have made progress, we're not where we'd like to be.
I've heard it's better. I've heard it's better, but we're still last in the county, is what I'm hearing, so, um-
I don't know about that.
I, I don't, I'm just telling you what I'm, what I'm hearing.
Won't be for long.
Alright.
I think that the resources are in place, uh, over the course of last year, and are, have been implemented, implemented this year. Um, the goal, as I, I think I said before, is three weeks or less. Um, we're at, as of today, about four.
Yeah.
So, that was much worse a time ago. Um, that's not where we want to be, though, so.
And, and again, I'm hearing this from, and, and this is, to me, that the separation is, you know, for a, a, a new house even, or a large, you know, 15 houses in a subdivision, that's, that's three to four weeks, or even longer, that, I can, I can defend that. It's hard for me when I'm looking at the paver contractor that says it's taking him four weeks to get a permit, this guy's putting pavers, I mean, he's done 50,000 jobs in the city over his career, you know, like, we know him, he knows us, he knows staff by name. We, we gotta be, in other cities, they, they say they walk in and they walk out with a permit, and, you know, I don't know if we can ever get there, but I feel like that should be the target.
We do that on a lot of types of permits.
Okay.
Um, there are others that do need review, um, so, I won't-
Yeah, and I want to be clear on two things, though. Um, first of all, this isn't a slight to staff, I know staff are working hard, this isn't saying people need to work harder and do a better job, this is saying I want to make sure we are facilitating and, and staffing appropriately and doing whatever we need. Secondly is, I'm not saying we cut corners, you know, I'm not saying by any stretch we lower our standards or cut corners. I'm just saying, whatever other cities are doing, and if I'm being told bad information, I'm, I'm happy to report back and say, "Come on, you know, I'll, I'll call them out on that too," but that's, that's what I'm hearing from people that I, that I trust, so, anyway, that's, that's that. Panhandling and, uh, panhandling, the, the perception is that, um, I don't know if the data supports it, uh, Chief sent me some numbers, it says year over year, we're, we're at about the same in that kind of population of, uh, in our, in our city, but I can tell you the perception is that this problem is, is, is building in our community. Um, the perception is that other cities to the north of us and around us are putting ordinances and doing things to address it, and it's kind of collapsing the problem down on us. So, I, I don't think we can, we're not gonna solve it tonight, I just wanted to put it on the radar, I think it's something we have to, if there's solutions out there, we need to be talking about, if there's funding, we need to be finding, if there's partnerships, we need to be partnering. We're not gonna solve homelessness, that's, that's a bigger issue than any one city will ever solve. We're doing what we can, but there's this other element, we've got to figure out a way, make sure we've given our, our, our police, uh, and, and staff the, the tools that they need in their tool bag to, to be able to help us control this, make sure all of our residents, um, are, are comfortable and, and, and all those things. So, uh, again, complex issue, not gonna solve it tonight, but just wanted to put it on the radar. You had a comment on that?
I could not agree with you more, and we touched the issue during our strategic planning. I think the key is, we need to make sure we have the right ordinances and resources in place, and the irony is, I had a problem just tonight on that, that I had to deal with. So, it's real, it's there, I'm hearing it from people in the community, small business people, big business people. I think that should be a priority that we address soon. I wholeheartedly agree, Mayor.
Do you have a comment?
Uh, we did reach out to Michael Khan, who is responsible for the surrounding ordinances in the area, and got a ballpark, so when you guys go through your budget discussions, if that's something you want to include, he, he does think that is something he could figure something out that's New Smyrna specific.
Okay, I, I guess gotta rack it, because all that's public record, I feel like we could just go copy paste what they got.
Right, but it's, it's, you've got to create the record, and, and it's testimony, it's, it's the record.
Alright, alright. Yes.
Mayor, just, uh-
Briefly, because we're not out of time. Is it 10:30 we have to extend, or 11:00, I always forget?
Just to comment on the panhandling, um, we, we do have an ordinance currently, correct? That prohibits panhandling?
At least, uh, I, I, we don't have the time to dive into this today, I just wanted to put it on the radar, I think, if, I'd ask staff again, if we have some spot on an agenda, you see it's a little bit light, let's pencil this in the next month or two, let's have the discussion, at least kick it off, and start talking about, "Hey, we need to fund this, we need to empower this, we need to do, we need to do this." I think we have to have that discussion, I'm not sure 10:24 is the time to start it, so, um, the two, last two items, uh, Investment Committee, just wanted to give you guys an update, we, uh, we've met a few times, we're moving slowly and methodically. That's all, um, that's a public committee, so those, that, uh, those, um, commit, uh, that meeting is recorded, the City Clerk will be posting the, the audio, you'll be able to hear all of that, full transparency. Um, and, but the, the good news is, there's potential there, what we're seeing is there's potential there to generate about 300K, and this isn't speculative, this is like the lowest level of investment, I mean, it's basically money in a mattress almost. 300K in the general fund, actually be more than that in other funds, but about 300K in the general fund, so as you talk about some of these things we're gonna need funding for, there's one potential source. Uh, we, we did ask today, even though we probably are under the, the threshold that would require it, uh, we are gonna go out to RFP for a custodian. Uh, that's just a person that helps us do that, it's not necessarily a financial advisor, um, but it's a person that helps us manage all of it, and again, that's just out of the abundance of kind of caution and transparency, uh, so that'll come to you all eventually at some point, um, and I'll try to keep posted on that as well. And then lastly, you got four minutes, three minutes? Um, I was always taught growing up, you make a public mistake, you correct it publicly, so, um, many, 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 many meetings ago, uh, somebody came up making some public comments, uh, I, I made a comment that they, um, they, they took in a way that I didn't mean it, they took it, uh, and it offended them, and so I wanted to publicly apologize to Joel, um, I'm willing to work with anybody on anything, we may not agree on everything by any stretch, but I'm willing to work with anything, and more importantly, we can agree to disagree professionally, so, uh, Joel, if you're watching, or you eventually watch this or hear this, I, I sincerely apologize and look forward to working with you, so. Uh, that's my last item, we have four minutes, City Manager report?
You have my, you have my report, if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer the question.
Any questions, we can extend the meeting, so if we need time, don't, don't censor yourselves, any questions for the City Manager? Seeing none, City Clerk is next.
No report.
Alright, we're gonna miss you, thank her for the chairs, we appreciate it. City Attorney's report?
No report.
Alright, with that, meeting's adjourned in the nick of time.